And everyone, it is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, and we are gathered for the monthly business meeting of the Athens-Clark County Mayor and Commission. Business is not concluded by 8:15, which we hope it will. There will be a 15-minute break. We're going to begin by just noting the civility pledge provided to us by the Georgia Municipal Association, and that indicates that the way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take, that our collective decisions will be better when differing views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered, and that all people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness, and that we value all input and commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other. So we'll begin with a roll call from the clerk.
Davenport?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Fisher?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Culpepper?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Thornton?
Here.
Hambie?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business is approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, April, excuse me, Tuesday, August 6th, Tuesday, August 20th, non-voting meetings of Tuesday, August 13th, and corrections from Tuesday, July 16th and Tuesday, June 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion for those minutes from Commissioner Thornton. I've got a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, are there any written communications this evening?
There are.
I want to turn very briefly, before we go over the rules of public input, to Acting Manager Nikki Jones, because we have a new department head, and so I'd like Manager Jones to introduce her to us.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commissioner knows, we recently hired a new HR director, so she's here today, and I'm going to ask her to introduce herself. But first and foremost, I want to say we're really pleased to have someone of her caliber join us at ACC Gov. She has over 20 years of HR experience, and 14 of those years in Gwinnett, and some of those years as Director in Gwinnett. So I'm really excited to have Ms. Vicky Casella. Vicky, would you come up?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Is this on?
It is.
Just wanted to make sure. Very excited to be with you. I look forward to working with you. Thank you, Nikki, for that introduction. I look forward to working with Nikki in his office. Very happy to step into an HR department that's very dedicated to providing the best customer service and support for employees, departments, and county citizens. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Director Casella. We look forward to working with you. Thanks for coming to Athens.
Sure.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I do want to note at this point the rules of public input. We have several opportunities for public input this evening. We'll have an opportunity on the consent agenda, individual opportunities on each of the two planning and zoning items, an opportunity on old and new business, and at the conclusion of the night, an opportunity to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda. Rules provide for up to three minutes of public input per individual. You're going to see the light in front of the clerk. It will turn green when you begin speaking, it will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and it will turn red when your time has expired. Now, thank you for being with us tonight. Please, if you do have public input during any of these occasions, make sure you clearly state your name and the item to which you're speaking, so we can get that for the record. So with that said, we have an opportunity for input right now on the consent agenda, and those are items 1 through 16. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any of those items, 1 through 16? Seeing none, is there any Commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? All right. Attorney Drake, could you read any ordinances associated with the consent agenda for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is ordinances associated with Agenda Items 1, 2, and 3. Agenda Item 1, ordinance to amend the FY 2024 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for operating budget overages for the Sheriff's Office Police Department, Fire and Emergency Services, and Animal Services, and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 2, an ordinance to amend the special purpose local option sales tax 2020 program budget, so as to provide additional funding for Project Number 15 Sandy Creek Nature Center Exhibit, Subproject Number 1 Aquarium Innovations, and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 3, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 Annual Operating and Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for subscription and implementation costs of procurement software and for other purposes.
Thanks, Attorney Drake. Do I hear a motion from the body for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Fisher, and I have a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we're going to move now to public input on the first of our two planning and zoning items. First of these is Item 17, which involves 215 Shady Brook Drive. Is there anyone who is here to speak to this item? Again, just state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken Val, Southern Company, 1041 Lake Wellbrook Drive, Athens, Georgia, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Kittle and the rezon request that's before you. I'm going to be very brief, but I'll certainly be happy to take any questions that any of you may have after my time is up. We prepared the plans and the documents that you're going to be acting on this evening, and we have worked almost continuously over the last year and a half, off and on, with different departments, attempting to make sure that their concerns were addressed as the project moved forward with a positive recommendation. So in that regard, we've worked with the Public Works Department, the Planning Department, the Public Utilities Department, and the Variance Board, and Mr. Kittle has had multiple meetings with the neighborhood residents. The first one, when a bridge was proposed, was somewhat challenging, but when the bridge ceased to be on the table, then the following meeting was very positive as well. So we think we've attempted to address all concerns that have been raised thus far and look forward really for the development of a very attractive and another opportunity to provide housing to the Athens-Clark County area. With that, Mr. Kittle may want to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Val.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and just make sure you state your name for the record.
Okay, my name's Ronnie Kittle. I live at 418 Oakwood Drive, Bogart, Georgia. I'm the owner of the 23 acres at Shady Brook, and I'm also the owner and been the owner of Willamette subdivision for 40 years, which joins to this property. And what we hope to do is build 60 cottages, houses in that neighborhood, ranging from $500,000 to $600,000 a piece, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet with two-car garages. So I'd be glad to answer any questions if anything comes up.
Thank you, Mr. Kittle. Is there anyone else here to speak to this program? All right, we're going to go ahead and move to discussion. This project is in District 3, so Commissioner Taylor, I want to give you an opportunity to make a motion.
I make a motion to deny this request for rezon.
Second.
Discussion, Commissioner Taylor?
No, sir. No discussion.
Commissioner Davenport?
No comment.
All right. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'd like to just speak to this as well, because there is a CDO with my name on it in this packet, and so I do want to address that. And I had hoped that that would be able to be joined with some restrictions on the property to address the concerns of the neighbors. However, since that is not the case, and there are not those other restrictions put on the rezoning, I'm going to withdraw that CDO, and hopefully I'll be able to work with the Commissioner in that district another, the next time something comes through, so that we can make sure that we have that connection between the two, between the trail that we will be voting on later this evening and the development that is coming down the pipeline pretty soon on the Dekel property off of Barnett Shoals. I do think that there's a lot of good elements to this development and put forth, and I am a little bit concerned what could come forth if we don't, if it just is built by right as RS8. But anyway, those are my just comments for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I know I was unable to attend our agenda setting, but I did watch the video, and it seemed like this was well-received there. I haven't seen anybody at the podium here or at the agenda setting against it. I see that it comes with a unanimous recommendation for approval with conditions from our Planning Commission, and staff also recommended approval with the same conditions, so I guess I'm a little puzzled by this. I just want to clarify, if we deny today, they can't come back with anything for a year. Is that correct?
I think it's 12 months, is my understanding. I'm not putting my plan here.
That's correct, process-wise.
Okay.
Alternately, a withdrawal by the applicant means that there could be a planned development or similar remedy sought prior to then.
And did I understand, because I know there were concerns about the non-binding nature of the plan, which I think, as I understand, that the applicant offered for it to be binding, and it was Planning Commission who removed that at the suggestion of our staff to make it non-binding. But it didn't sound to me like the applicant is trying to build anything other than what's here. So if they're willing to, I heard mentioned in the, again, I was just watching the meeting, but that like we could put caps on like the number of homes they build or the size of the homes, so that characteristically it can't really change substantively in terms of the things that residents might be concerned about, like having it be denser than it would otherwise be, or encroaching closer on their, encroaching closer to their property. So I guess maybe I'm wondering if the Commissioner representing this district, the motioners, might be interested in a hold for a cycle to see if either those conditions could be placed on it, and it's something that everyone's happy with, or if not, give the applicant an opportunity to offer withdrawal, and then they could come back with something more satisfactory without having to wait a whole year.
Well, I actually sat in the meetings with the residents as well as the developer, and I admit, there was some work that came together. But because of where Shady Brook sits, and because it's right beside the Atlas, which from my understanding, the residents at Shady Brook felt the same way about the Atlas, and was kind of promised a little bit, I'm going to limit my comment, but with working with the residents, this is not what they would like in their backyard, and I know we have that slogan, "Not in my backyard," but with sitting in with them and knowing that what they go through with the Atlas, I didn't, they didn't want it. So that's just why I said to deny it. That's kind of what my residents want.
Okay. I guess I'll make a substitute motion to hold, in case anyone's interested in that conversation.
I'll second.
All right, so there's a substitute motion on the floor from Commissioner Hul to hold, the second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner, any further comments pertinent to your motion?
I don't think so. I mean, this would give us an opportunity to talk about it again at the agenda setting if the hold is in place, and it would give the applicant an opportunity to address the concerns that I'm understanding residents still have perhaps, or to just go back to the drawing board without having to wait a whole year. So that's my rationale here. We, I guess the other part is, we need housing, and this gives us some housing.
You're absolutely right. We do need housing, but we have to be very responsible when we do have housing, because while we just approve things, we have residents that live in Athens-Clark County who cannot get into these things that we approve for them to live in, nor do we approve things that our family built in more than one bedroom that does not fit families. And so, yes, you're absolutely right, we do need housing, but we need to be very mindful of what type of housing we put in for the residents who put us in these seats. Just approving things is not going to stop us from having a housing crisis, so we have to be very responsible.
Commissioner Link is second for the substitute motion. Want to give you an opportunity for any input?
Yeah, my concern here is the current zoning, RS8, I believe, would, you know, it would assure that there is much more expensive housing. I mean, we're talking about $500,000 to $600,000, $600,000 homes, which certainly is out of reach for a vast majority of this community, but for every family that might move into one of those $500,000 to $600,000 homes in this development, then now they're more likely to go looking in our existing neighborhoods and tearing down and flipping homes, which, you know, is gentrification. That's what we're seeing. We're seeing people who've been living in neighborhoods for generations being driven out because you have folks coming in and upgrading within those neighborhoods and driving up property values. So I'm prone to support something that creates a whole new neighborhood for that class of people seeking that type of home. My other concern here is that this RM1 zoning, or this RM, yeah, the RM1 zoning that's proposed allows for a significant amount of conservation of the existing woodlands. The RS8 would mean that you'd have bigger lots, the infrastructure would be more spread out. This plan concentrates the building in a corner of the property, which allows for the conservation of a significant amount of the property. I would like to see some restrictions put on, put on the homes. I mean, maybe we could come together and, you know, assure that there are conditions put on whatever's built, that they are homes of a certain size, a certain scale, certain lot size, to assure that, you know, this non-binding site plan which is being proposed, that whatever does end up getting built is as close to this as possible, which are, you know, single-family homes of modest scale, and assure that those woodlands are conserved, which offers a significant buffer from the surrounding neighborhoods.
Commissioner Thornton?
I, I'm going to support Commissioner Taylor's recommendation, but I'm going to support it because of what Commissioner Hul said, and maybe, maybe, I, you know, kind of dreading about a whole year, but Commissioner Hul mentioned that staff directed the developers. No, wait a minute.
I'm going to have Commissioner Thornton complete, and then I return to you.
And if that's the case, or if it's not the case, we need to have a clarification on what staff's visions are. If we're changing paths and how we're doing development, the Commission needs to know, so we'll know how to vote fairly. So my intent is not to punish the developers. It sounds like a good plan for all the reasons that Commissioner Link says, but I do think that if there's, if there is confusion or misinformation or misunderstanding, it might just be a misunderstanding, we need maybe a work session with staff, or somebody needs to tell us where the change happened, why, you know, if there's, and if there's no changes, then let's clarify that too. But I always try to respect the Commissioner of any district, and I would support, I try. Don't have it all the time, but I try to support the Commissioner in their, in their district.
Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, I don't want to necessarily talk to the merits of which, which design or anything is better. What I just want to talk about, to address here, is just the support or not support for holding it for a month. That would give the developer an opportunity to reach out to the Commissioner and then bring it forth. It would just come back again, and the Commissioner might make the same exact, you know, recommendation, but I think it would give the developer, who has gone a lot of back and forth and other opportunity to communicate, and then we could come back and just see if there's been any change in what's been able to work out or not work out. So I'm not, I'm not supporting any rezoning, I'm supporting the hold so that there can be more discussion.
Commissioner Hul?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said for clarity. So my understanding, I guess I'll, I'll share this with a question for confirmation from staff here, but my understanding is that the developer, the applicant brought forth a bind, they offered a binding site plan, and the Planning Department recommended a condition to the Planning Commission to make it non-binding, because there's issues with topography that would require all kinds of tweaks to the project very likely, and so instead of that having to come back for who-knows-how-many revisions, just make it non-binding. And the Planning Commission accepted that recommendation as part of their two conditions for approval. So I guess just, am I correct about that sequence of events?
Playing Director Bruce Lonnie is here to respond.
Yeah, that's exactly right. In looking at the plan, the application from the applicant acknowledged that they were willing to be bound, but they also acknowledged that there'd be some movement once final engineering was taking place, and there would be modest, I think was the term they used in their application, modest changes to the plan. And so that was the source of our review at the staff level, and Planning Commission concurred, that rather than bind them to this, but it's focus on the areas of concern, and that's what, with Planning Commission, it focused on really two issues that they were presented. Certainly other issues could be brought to bear that may need to be kind of nailed down with the submittal, to provide some guardrails on certain performance aspects of the submittal, but to date, we really just had the one CDO to that effect.
And those guardrails, as you put it, that we could offer as, that the Commissioner could offer as a, as a series of additional conditions could include saying a maximum number of units, a maximum height for those units, it could define the buildable area as what's shown on the site plan, even though, like without leaving that area, is that right?
That's correct.
So, you know, I raise that up just to say, it seemed like the concerns, I wasn't in a meeting with the residents, but everything I've heard in the public meetings, it seems like the concerns are largely about what could happen by right if we just approve a straight rezon without a binding plan. But if we can put guardrails on it like that, in my mind, we'd do well to do that. This is, if we did, this would be a less dense proposal than what they could currently build by right without needing to ever come before us. So if we're worried about like likely impact on neighbors and the things that neighbors are usually concerned about, the thing that they could build instead by right would be allowed to be more dense than this is already, I think. Is that, is that correct? They can build more units on an RS8 lot than this current proposal proposes for an RM1? It's just how they're arranging them that's different, I believe. So it seems kind of rare to me, actually, that people come trying to build less dense than usual, and usually when we have lines out the door, it's concerns around density and traffic or encroaching on lots, and in this case, we're not seeing that either. This would also guarantee us the right-of-way for Greenway, which is something that our master plan calls for, but we don't necessarily get otherwise. I mean, we could, but who knows what happens with the property if something else is built without this. So I guess it just seems to me like a potential win-win, and I'm not convinced, I don't understand why we wouldn't at least allow the opportunity to come back in 40 days, and maybe in that case, we still deny, but, you know, give some time to try to work it out.
So Commissioner Davenport, Commissioner Link?
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. So I still agree with the original motioner. So the community have had several, there have been several community conversations with the developer and the property owner and the residents, and I just want to make sure I heard Mr. Lonnie correctly. An RM1 is from an RS8 to an RM1, an RM1 is less dense than an RS8. I just want to make sure.
It's, no. In gross numbers, it is not. The RS8 density on there today would allow for 88 single-family lots. If the entire parcel could be subdivided, 88 would be the max. What they are proposing, however, is 60 units. So what's proposed with an RM zone that they are willing to, by their own admission, cap themselves to, is less than the maximum that an RS8 yield would give by right. That's the difference.
Okay. So based on the topography, if anybody's been out there, it's, unless they clear cut the entire hill, because it's massive, I mean, most, I would say two-thirds, maybe a third, of that property is not developable. The issue, and it's not an issue, it's not anything against the property owner, and I don't mind holding it, it's just, we're going to vote on a project coming up that we rezoned with a planned development that the planned developer didn't go through, so now we're getting something that we agreed upon, we're getting more density from the project. I just fear that once engineering wants, and it's, and it's not that we don't need homes, I do respect the people who've been here, but it's just more of a fact that like I would hate for, because I want the developer to make some money, and I want us to build some homes, but at the end of the day, I would hate to see something that's not bonding be more egregious than what's already out there. Because right now, you've got due pledges, you've got single-family homes, it's a community that's been there for decades, and it's a peaceful community, and just listening to those residents, they are not objecting any development, they're not objecting development at all. They just don't want their quality of life to be affected by what possibly could be built with an RM1 zoning.
Commissioner Link, I saw your hand up.
I think that Commissioner Hul addressed a couple of the questions I had for planning staff regarding, you know, the number of units that would be allowed by right. I'm just, I'm just a little flabbergasted, because I have not heard from any residents out there. Usually when we get these controversial rezoning proposals, we get barraged with emails.
They have a great Commissioner, so they know she's going to be, is why they're not here.
So, yeah, I am, I'm just curious. Like we, I mean, there's been, I'd really love to hear from the residents and try and understand their concerns. You know, we're a community with a housing crisis, and, you know, I've seen what houses are going for in my neighborhood and nearby neighborhoods, you know, and what they're getting flipped for. And, you know, I, I'd love to see a project like this take some of the pressure off our existing in-town neighborhoods that are just getting overrun by, you know, redevelopment within their own neighborhoods.
Commissioner Wright?
I have gotten calls. I've gotten calls since this began, when the rezon sign came out, when the rumors were out about a bridge that was going to be tad money, all these details, and I, this isn't about what Commissioner has heard from which constituents, this is about what's in the agenda report and what we've heard, so, but since you said you hadn't and I had, I thought I'd chime in. And so I have been listening to these residents and their concerns as well.
Commissioner Hambie?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the chance to talk, and I've, you know, I've seen a lot of work that Mr. Bill has done, and checked out Mr. Kittle's work on his website, very good work in all of them, and Mr. Bill's been around for a long time and has done some good work here in Athens. And I guess my concern is this, so, you know, at some, you know, at the end of the day, we're rezoning this to RM1, and there's a situation, you know, where there's a recent development that was done over off Oathorpe Avenue, and it passed, and now the piece of property is up for sale. So that's the situation that I'm thinking about here, you know, we're not just rezoning, and the plan looks great, and however, but at the end of the day, we're rezoning all 23 acres. And Bruce, what could be put on an RM1 with 23 acres, I think, is a question to look at as well, certainly a lot more than what could be put on with RS8.
Commissioner Thornton?
And I do want to chime in to follow what Commissioner Link, I actually met with Commissioner Myers with the residents, and they were very thrilled at first, but I think the binding piece is what knocked it out the cage. They were very thrilled at the presentation with Mr. Kittle, but if staff is redirecting binding, we just need to know about it, then we don't know how to vote. Right now, we're just... Right now, we're just going by words. And even the development that we approved last month in my district, I was struggling with the same thing, kind of, sorta. But I didn't have a neighborhood that was speaking out. It's gone behind commercial area. I don't have the same conflict that Commissioner Taylor has. I was not happy with that vote, but I was trying to be objective and fair. So whatever, again, I'm ready to vote, Mayor, if nobody else has anything.
Just one observation and then I'm going to have Attorney Drake read the ordinance. Having been through many of these rezonings, you know, one of the things that's worth noting is that any conditions travel with the property. And so under any future ownership, those conditions would lie with the land. So, you know, if what in this meeting has been described as guardrails were placed on a plan in language, and that would be things like, you know, total height restriction, size restriction of the individual units, total cap on number of units, planted buffer from the adjacent property line, those are the kind of things that can be baked into any future ownership, you know, in that possibility that this may flip to some other owner. So.
But that's not in this plan. That's not in what we're voting on tonight.
Well, and so that's one of the kinds of things that could be commissioner added conditions. So we've seen those many times and those are often beneficial to the ultimate outcome of a project. So Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, I guess I just want to clarify. Yeah, if we were to vote on what's before us tonight, there's a CDO that was administratively, you know, the timing got weird and so that's not even on the table. So, yeah, there's the thing that came to us from the planning commission. And that is a non-binding proposal. That's right. But we can make it as binding as we want. I mean, we can go back and say, make the whole thing binding. Or we can go back and pick the things that we think are most relevant and say, these shall be conditions. And if they're conditions, they're conditions whether it sells or not. I mean, the Oglethorpe Ave property that was just referenced, that's a planned development we approved. So literally, if they want to change anything down to a bench or a lamp post, they're going to have to come back before us. Never mind if they wanted to build whatever would be by right in a different zoning. So, you know, the way we safeguard against something getting off the rails is by putting it in writing with our approval. And so if what we're really looking at here is everyone was comfortable with it binding and then somewhere along the way, the fact that it's non-binding has everybody worried, let's take a month to hammer out how it can be binding. Or if that's really not going to work, give the applicant an opportunity to withdraw. It's just weird to me that an applicant would come to us offering a binding site plan. That satisfies everyone seemingly. Then it gets taken out by the planning commission and now we deny them the opportunity to do this or anything for a year because our own planning commission took away the binding nature of the site plan that they offered. Like clearly they're coming to us trying to build something in line with what would jive with the community. And it's hard for me to imagine if they were to build what's actually on this non-binding site plan, but if we were to put guardrails around it, put language in writing around it, that would mandate it to be the size and scale of this. It's smaller in density and smaller in size than what could be built there by right. And I don't know how many times I've sat on this commission and we've had something before us and because there's a public opportunity to weigh in on it, a lot of people line up with their concerns and then it gets denied. And we all think, well, something else better could happen instead. But what ends up happening instead is something gets built by right that we would all consider worse. And people can by right build quite densely, more densely than what's proposed here, if it were binding. They can build by right more densely and closer to the property lines and closer to the creek than this is proposing. And they can do that by right and they can cut down the trees and they can grade the land by right. This body passed an ordinance that made it easier to mass grade so that people could by right build more stuff on difficult topography without ever having to come before us. So I don't think we should kid ourselves to think that denying this leads to something better. It probably does not. So again, not trying to legislate what we make binding on the floor today, just trying to give this body and the applicant an agenda cycle a month to figure it out. So I'd like to think that would be the way we could be good stewards of the land and the business that we conduct.
Got Commissioners Link and Hamby on tap.
Yeah, I just want to refresh everyone's memory. About a year or so ago, or maybe it was early this year, you know, I had a similar conundrum on a piece of property that wanted to upzone from RM1 to RM2 and it was directly adjacent to an RS5 neighborhood with, you know, houses that had 15-foot-deep backyards. And I was able to meet with the residents and work with the developer to put some conditions on the property without implementing a binding site plan. It allowed the developer flexibility. There were some issues with sewer access and, you know, existing trees that he wanted to conserve. And by putting these restrictions, that effectively, you know, limited the height of any building adjacent to the property line to what was already allowed with the RS5. You know, basically, any building would be, have to be the same height as the adjacent existing single-family homes and asking for a deeper buffer. And some specifics as far as plantings, evergreen plantings, and some lighting restrictions and restrictions on upper-story balconies. You know, these are all the kinds of things that people are concerned about when they think about denser development right next door to them. So if we can put those kind of conditions down so to assure that the development mimics what would be allowed and what they're used to having right next door to them, you know, I feel like we could come up with something palatable. And I share Commissioner Hul's concerns about mass grading. This is a pristine piece of property and I would hate to see an RS8 by right development go in there and just completely clear-cut and mass-grade this gorgeous piece of property. This is a really sensitive proposal that concentrates the development in a corner of the property and preserves this, you know, vast bank of woodlands and a much wider stream buffer than what's required. You know, I understand the difficulty of developing on a piece of property like this and I feel like that was probably the motivation for removing the binding nature of the site plan. You know, there's places where the developer might want to like move a house over a little bit to conserve a tree or, you know, put the road in a slightly different angle to conserve a tree or deal with the topography. You know, I think that there are conditions that could be, come up with that would assure that, you know, what is seen here is effectively what you're going to get and you're not going to have a negative impact on the nearby residents and they'll get something that's, you know, similar to what they're used to living next door to.
Got Commissioner Hamby and Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport and Commissioners Myers and Thornton.
Just real quick, so the neighborhood, this is my, give me my last comment. The neighborhoods around it are, especially on Seagrave Drive, is dense. The residents on Shady Brook and Seagrave Drive are not concerned about the density. They're concerned about the masking and the height. When you go to an RM1, you're going up in height. When the Atlas Great Project, you know, I voted against it, was built, a whole bunch of trees were torn down. So now these neighbors, the people who've been there, got to see this four-story, almost four-story building right next door to them. There's lights, there's going to be lights that are going to have to be put up on, in this area as well. So this quiet neighborhood, quality of life was diminished by the lighting and this what they consider a gold test site of these towering buildings. The exact same thing can happen with the RM1. So not so much the density, it's the height. You can have the biggest, tallest oak trees in the world, but if you got all that light, you got these towering apartment buildings or homes, and maybe we can work on conditions, but with by right, with the RM1, a three-story apartment building could be.
Commissioner Myers.
We can restrict the height.
Commissioner Myers.
Okay. I just want to bring again the question back to, the discussion back to the question at hand, which is holding it for a month. And if it comes back and what we're voting on in a month is just like it is tonight, I'm not going to be supporting because all the things that Commissioner Davenport talks about could happen. If it comes back and the restrictions are on there that the developer puts forth to the neighbors and works with the neighbors and the commissioner that restrict exactly what Commissioner Davenport is talking about, then I would be supportive and hopefully the neighbors would be supportive. So, but what we're voting on now is not all those details. It's whether or not to hold it a month and see if anything happens and see what comes back here. That's all I'm voting on tonight.
Commissioner Thornton.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I guess my thought is, I think, I think Commissioner Taylor and all of us are in an awkward position. If we're, if advice is given to developers and we're not aware of it or we don't, that's not filtered into our decision-making, I think it puts us in a real embarrassing situation. I, I'm a little annoyed when we have commissioners that say, nobody's come down here to speak out against this. I'm a little annoyed because I know, and I remember, when the Oglethorpe folk came and Nottingham folk came, you didn't feel the same way then. Some of the same folk who are around here now, we ain't seen nobody. I saw some old people, oh, no, seasoned, and begged you, begged us. And now because you ain't seen nobody, it's not real. So let me say this. I'm going, Mayor, may I ask Commissioner Taylor a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Taylor, would you have a problem changing your motion to, what was that you asked about, Jesse? The hold for a month? Would you have a problem holding for a month? And, because I don't think, or letting the developer withdraw so he don't have to wait a year? How about that? Would that work with you? Are you adamant? And if you're adamant, I'm with you, girl. I don't want to punish the developer because of what staff has done. That's my point. Or we think has done. I better not say has done. But I don't want to punish the developer for a whole year. If he can withdraw, he can come back later.
I don't want to punish the developer either. And I'm going to be careful with what I can and can't say, but he didn't vote for me, so I don't sit here for him.
Okay.
But I'm, out of respect to this body, I am willing to go along with the 30 days only because I don't want Shady Brook to be robbed of their voice. And I don't want anything else to possibly come back that could be worser than this. But in 30 days, I could be really ready to deny it because that's their wishes.
And I want to go on record, I support whatever your recommendation is. I just wanted to remind some of what happened with.
Commissioner Hamby and then I'm going to have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
Sure. And I'm going to direct my comments to Commissioner Taylor as well. And Commissioner Taylor, I've seen this situation a lot of times where we put something on hold and this incumbent upon us to negotiate whatever those conditions are and how that's going to work. So a lot of times, I think what works best is to maybe offer the opportunity for the applicant to withdraw and that way they have to go through planning commission again and open up the process for the residents again to look at that. So maybe that's something to consider there. Instead of holding it for 30 days, because during the next 30 days, it's, I mean, you know, I don't, I mean, it's not, to me, to me, it's more fair to the neighborhood to, and more transparent when they go through that public process again through the planning commission. So withdrawing it allows them to do that tomorrow.
Attorney Drake, can you read the ordinance for us, please?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning three parcels of land comprising approximately 23.48 acres located at 215 Shady Brook Drive from RS8, single-family residential to RM1, mixed-density residential and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, the substitute motion on the floor is to hold for a cycle and this would return for a vote first Tuesday of October. Motioner was Commissioner Hul, so we'll begin a roll call vote there.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Nope.
Wright?
Nope.
Fisher?
No.
We've got four yes and six no.
All right, we return to the core motion from Commissioner Taylor, which was a vote for denial.
Taylor?
Before we vote, can I ask to change my motion from denial to them just withdrawing so that they're not punished?
So Commissioner Taylor is asking development team if they would like to request a withdrawal? Just a yes or no?
Mr. Mayor, we should probably have them say that at the podium.
The applicant has said that a withdrawal would be acceptable. And so Commissioner Taylor, if you'd like to modify your motion to accept a withdrawal, you can do that.
I would like to modify my motion to accept the withdrawal.
Second. I've got a motion from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Davenport. I will do a roll call, beginning with Commissioner Taylor.
Yes. Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right, motion for withdrawal passes. Moving on to item 18. 18 regards 1580 and 1590 Lexington Road. Is there anyone here to speak to this property? And again, just make sure you state your name for the record.
Good evening. Jeremy Crosby, 264 Alabama Boulevard, Jackson, Georgia. I'm with JPC Design and Construction. We're here to request a special use on 1.17 acres there at 1580 and 1590 Lexington Road. This is the existing Marathon gas station on Lexington Road there in front of the movie theater. We're in the flyover zone and it requires a special use to do an addition to the building. But in addition to doing an addition to the building for a fast food restaurant, we're also going to take the existing convenience store all the way back down to just the steel and do a full remodel on the interior, exterior of the convenience store and do an addition for a fast food restaurant. And that store is wore out. It's seen its better days and we're ready to give it a complete facelift inside out and even the gas canopy will be reimagined in a more modern look on it. And I just would ask the commission's approval tonight. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Is there anyone else here to speak to the Lexington Road proposal? All right, seeing none, this is District 3. Commissioner Taylor, would you like to place a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve this. We are happy to see you.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Taylor and second from Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Taylor, any further remarks?
No, I just can't wait to see the finishing result. I'm there every day. Yeah. I add chicken, I'll be there every other day.
Commissioner Davenport.
He had me at chicken and fast food.
Any further input? I'll have Attorney Drake read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the CGA Commercial General Airport overlay for two parcels of land located at 1580 and 1590 Lexington Road and for other purposes.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Taylor, second from Commissioner Davenport. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we move on now to public input on old and new business. So those are items 19 through 29. And again, opportunities for up to three minutes. And if anybody would like to speak to any of these items, please clearly state your name and the item to which you're speaking. Is there any input on old or new business? Again, items 19 through 29. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering Consultants, 1010 Commerce Drive in Bogart, Georgia. I am here to speak on item 22, 4555. I am here to speak on item 22, 4555 Lexington Road, approval of private pump station in Forest Main. Just briefly, just want to let you know it is very, very important to this project, and I'm here simply to try to answer any questions that you might have. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business? Again, 19 through 29. Evening.
Hi, good evening. Valerie Bell, 2025 Baxter Street, the regional library director, and I'm just glad to see that the East Side is at final slate selection. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Bell. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Epperson. I live at 490 Barnett Scholz Road, 206 Athens, Georgia, 30605. Speaking to item number 26. Dear Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to encourage you to vote yes again to item number 26 on your agenda pertaining to the ARPA funding for the Economic Development Task Force. I'd also like to thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for the opportunity to work with the task force that has issued these recommendations for economic development with ARPA funds. The mandate for our task force called, among other objectives, the creation of worker-owned businesses and secondary co-ops as part of our small business development strategy. And with this being a one-time funding event, our subcommittee paid special attention to how we could create self-sustaining economic engines in Athens with these funds. I'm very encouraged and excited, for example, that we could expand the Small Business Revolving Line of Credit, if passed, which would literally pay itself forward as more small businesses' loans are repaid and made available for more small businesses. In 2018, the annual business survey of Athens Clark County found that there were over 1,000 businesses in Athens Clark County owned by someone aged 55 or older and whose workforce includes over 12,000 employees, $382 million in payroll, and $3 billion in revenue. This is our local part of a larger phenomenon called the Silver Tsunami. The small businesses owned by baby boomers in the U.S. who will be looking to exit their business in the next five to 10 years. And these statistics are not currently looking great, as nationwide small business sales are currently at about a dismal 20% success rate. Put another way, 1 in 5 businesses today are successfully selling on the market. But this task force now will be investing in our resiliency, conducting outreach to keep those 12,000 employees and living and breathing businesses. Another project I'm excited about relates also to some information that the Atlanta Wealth Building Initiative discovered in 2023 with its annual analysis of the same data, which found that just 3% of Atlanta-area black-owned businesses are employer firms, while the vast majority of black-owned businesses, 97%, were operating as non-employer firms with no employees. This is why I'm particularly excited about another project within this proposal, which will focus on, among other types of small business certification, minority-owned businesses as potential members of purchasing and marketing cooperatives. These special secondary co-ops have solopreneur members who will join together for economies of scale and can begin to address some of the findings that the MTG Consulting Group found in their ACC Disparities Study, such as challenges with bond requirements, shorter limited time given to prepare bid packages or quotes, and in particular, competing with large companies. Like a small group of fish joining together to compete with a shark, purchasing co-ops are an amazing tool for leveling the economic playing field. In conclusion, it's been a pleasure working with Kara, Commissioners Taylor, and Myers. And while I personally, and some of the other task members, would have liked it if the awarding of funds to the chamber had only occurred through the Mayor and Commission's own task force process, still I believe these recommendations can lead to sustainable and just economic development outcomes for ACC over the coming two years. I'm again grateful for the opportunity to have taken part. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Is there anyone else here to speak to old or new business? Again, those are items 19 through 29. Good evening.
Evening. Good evening, everyone, Mayor and Commission. My name is Erin Thompson Podvin. I reside at 863 North Chase Street in Athens. I'm speaking tonight on item number 23. And as of July 1st this year, I also have the privilege and responsibility of serving as the Executive Director of Family Connection Communities and Schools of Athens. I want to start by thanking you all for your continued partnership and support in funding the Neighborhood Leaders Program. I think it goes without saying that this has been one of the most impactful collaborations that FCCIS has been a part of. That impact is what I want to speak about tonight. Since the program's inception in 2019, neighborhood leaders have been working to connect their residents to resources that improve their quality of life, working to empower their neighbors to self-advocate, working to promote a more engaged citizenry, and working to move the needle toward an Athens where everyone can thrive and not just survive. If that sounds like flowery word salad, then I would also like to share. Every goal that our neighborhood leaders are held to, every metric we report data on, is aligned to multiple goals, strategies, and policies identified in the Athens-Clark County Unified Government's Comprehensive Plan. In addressing issues of food insecurity, housing, physical and mental health, employment, and civic engagement, our team is working to meet the needs and opportunities across the outlined categories of people, place, prosperity, and vitality that our community chose to lift up as essential. Neighborhood leaders are performing a service and helping Athens Clark County to fulfill its stated goals. Equally as important is the connection that the work of our neighborhood leaders have to so many community initiatives. Their work is layered. It's the neighborhood leader at the Homeless Day Center who prescreens a client for SNAP. It's the neighborhood leader who checks on their elderly shut-in residents to ensure they aren't starved for food or human interaction. It's the neighborhood leader who collaborates with a site coordinator inside a school to bring diapers because a family hasn't the money or the transportation to get them. It may be 19 pairs of boots on the ground, but their reach far exceeds any physical footprints. Now, I know tonight the question at hand is whether you all will approve a requested cost of living increase for our neighborhood leaders. While this request was submitted before my time at the helm of FCCIS, I do see it as a reasonable request. When people do good work, it's nice to compensate them in kind. That said, I can appreciate there are many factors at play, and you all are going to make the decision that you are going to make, and we have to be okay with that. But I would be remiss, and I would do my team and my community a disservice if I did not publicly speak to the vital work that the Neighborhood Leaders Team does day in and day out, their collaborative spirit, and the countless ways in which they are improving the lives of residents across Athens Clark County. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Others here to speak to any item of old or new business? Again, those are items 19 through 29. All right. Seeing none, we'll come to action by the body. First item is 19. This is the Bridge Planning and Feasibility Study Design Contract. And I will entertain a motion from the body.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thornton?
No. Mayor.
Any others? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 20 is the TSPLOS 2023, Project 18, conjoined with TSPLOS 2018, Project 6, which is the Firefly Trail Subproject 3 construction contract award. Entertain a motion from the body.
So moved.
So moved.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Taylor. Is there an ordinance involved with this expenditure?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the Transportation Special Purpose Local Auction Sales Tax 2018 Program Budget so as to provide additional funding for project number 06, the Firefly Trail Project, and for other purposes.
Just a quick comment, Mayor. I am supportive of this, but I just want to note that there are several properties, I think seven or eight, that are still left to be negotiated, so I look forward to seeing how that plays out.
Commissioner Taylor, anything further?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Davenport?
Not that I'm against the Firefly Trail, because I'm not. It's just, y'all know the history. I don't want to go back over it again. I'll be voting no.
Any further input?
I just want to clarify, so moved is to approve, right? Because there's the different options in our agenda item. The motion is to approve.
Motion is to approve the items enumerated by staff and staff recommendation. Roll call, beginning with Commissioner Hamby.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Eight yes, two no.
All right. Eight, two, motion carries.
I want to change mine to no. Sorry.
All right. Before we move with the minutes, please note, kind of modified vote, so motion is 7-3 in favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next item, item 21, involves SPOS 2020, Project 11, Subproject 10, the Building Systems and Equipment Efficiency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Wright.
I have a CDO on this.
I apologize, Commissioner Link. I overlooked the CDO. Was the motion for the CDO?
No, sir, it's not. The motion's to approve.
Motion's for the staff recommendation, second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Link, would you like to make a substitute motion?
Yes, I'll make a substitute motion to approve the CDO, which makes this project eligible for public art. The Cultural Affairs Commission recommended that this project be eligible for public art. There's a line item for $92,400 in designated public art funds. Staff recommended against it, presumably because of the complexity of divvying up that $92,000 among this long list of projects that are receiving dribs and drabs of funding towards, you know, solar arrays and assorted efficiencies. I had some conversation with staff, with managers, Nikki Jones and Andrew Saunders, and expressed my concern to assure that this public art program, you know, continues and is put to the use that the public intended it to be. We've got a big opportunity here to allow this program to provide projects for local artists. So I came up with a CDO that identifies four of the projects, subprojects within this long list that are clear locations. The Costa Building, Memorial Park, the ACC Library, all three of those, which will be receiving some solar arrays from this funding bucket, as well as public safety EV accelerators. There are electric vehicle chargers that are going to be going at our sort of public safety locations. I leave it up to the Cultural Affairs Commission and staff to figure out how to properly divvy up that $92,000. But I feel like it's really important that we provide this opportunity, not only for our local artists, but to provide a vehicle through which this program, this renewable energy program, can be made more visible to the public. It's a really important program. You know, it's part of our 100% renewable commitment, and a good portion of our community doesn't realize that this is going on. And by, you know, having these public art installations, and I indicated that the artworks should convey a theme relating to environmental protection and/or renewable energy. By installing these public art projects in locations that have benefited from this big funding bucket that is there to preserve this planet that we all live on and future generations, we hope, will be able to live on into perpetuity. You know, I think it's really important that we have some opportunity to toot our horns about the project, and this is an ideal opportunity. We have a vast array of talent in this community, and I'm hoping to see some really interesting public art projects that will shout loud and clear about our commitment to renewable energy and to protecting the environment and saving the planet that we live on.
We have a substitute motion that adds public art to a number of these subprojects. Is there a second?
A second.
Got a second from Commissioner Myers.
Can I speak to the main motion, Mayor? I didn't.
Yeah, I'll return to that. Yeah, I apologize. Good, Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, you know, at first, when I saw this and saw the staff's recommendation for not to have the public art, you know, I'm not an artist. I'm not as creative as some other people are, and I didn't realize this opportunity we had to use this public art as part of the education about our renewable energy commitment. And we have a renewable energy resolution that is for our county to become 100% renewable by 2035, and for our community to be there by 2050. That is aspirational. But as Commissioner Link has pointed out, if people don't even know that this is part of our county's commitment, they're not going to be thinking along those lines. And so this, you know, if you pull up, we have a Clean Energy Plan, which is 149 pages, and includes information about having businesses and individuals aware of what's going on in the community and encouraging them as well. And this is good for the globe, good for the artists, and actually, it's really good for the pocketbook as well, to encourage people in this way, reducing energy costs at home, taking advantage of rebates from the federal government and from Georgia Power. A lot of people aren't aware of these. Hopefully, this public art will contribute to that and give people ideas. Probably have a nice, one of those QR codes there that'll take you to how you can save money and get rebates and so forth on home improvements for both renters and for homeowners as well. So I'm glad to be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hamby speaking to the staff.
Sure, thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor. And I just will say this, I think staff had it right. I mean, at the end of the day, with these, with the solar panels, the solar panels are an artwork of themselves. So when people see them, they will be aware of what's going on. And we talked about this when we were talking about the library. You know, I think it's a good learning, action for looking at the solar panels in the library parking lot and going, hey, what's that? And, you know, the library has artwork on it. There's a big artwork right next to the bus stop, several pieces of artwork around the library, Memorial Park, the same. I don't know, and what's the other list? Costa Building. I think there's a really nice mural on the side of the building over at Costa right now. So I guess I'm saying that $92,000, you know, it's not, you know, I pretend to be an artist. I don't know that I'm that good, and I hope maybe one day to be good. But just because you have the $92,000 in here doesn't mean it's going to go to local. The way it works is there's a call for art, and it could go to Timbuktu, somebody from Timbuktu, to come here and paint, I don't know, can you paint something on a solar panel or something? I don't know what to do. But I guess I'm saying staff has it right, and that $92,000 can go a long way with what they're trying to do and work with. So that's my whole point. Let's just, I mean, let's just be reasonable about all this.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, the reason I don't support the commission-to-find option is because it's changing the process. I believe that staff told us with some of the costs for executing this project that we need all the money to make sure that we can actually do the installation. And to make it into three different art projects and diluting the funding, I think it's kind of maybe a little bit of an insult to say that our community artists are going to have less, accept a lesser fee for their work. I know that I was on the panel for two different art for the Greenway. It's a very long process to get the artwork, to get it vetted, to pick the artist, to get the contracts. Those have yet to be done. I know that staff is working really hard to get the projects done and the artwork and the artist, and both of those, I believe, went to local artists. And so it's a blind, juried thing of community members. So, one, it's adding three more art processes for staff and a committee to vet. And I just, I think that I second the motion because I support what staff has put together for the option 1, A, B, C, D, and E for this agenda item.
Thanks, Commissioner Wright. I've got Commissioner Hool and Commissioner Davenport on tap.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I just want to, I think I understand the rationale behind staff's recommendation and the ACAC's recommendation to not have this project in its entirety, use the 3% funds. But are the four subprojects that are enumerated in the CDO, like feasible for art in a way the rest of them wouldn't make sense? Like, what's staff's take on that?
Andrew, please jump in. And the answer is, I suspect so, if we're thinking out of the box, maybe not in a traditional way?
Uh-huh. Okay. Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, you know, the art thing is wrapped into the SPOS proposal, so we don't have to debate this project by project. I guess I'm a little, I would invite the motioner to maybe clarify what conversations she's had to ensure that, like, these subprojects really are feasible, because if they are, it makes sense to me to allocate the small fraction toward art like we would for all the other things, the way our SPOS referendum says we should.
Commissioner Link, are you envisioning?
Yeah.
A piece that simply accompanies the location of the project?
If you note in the CDO language, it says in amounts in proximate locations to be determined by the Cultural Affairs. be determined by the Cultural Affairs Commission in consultation with ACC staff." These solar arrays are going to be on top of buildings, nobody's going to see them theoretically. It would be really nice to have a piece of public art, whether it's, you know, a commissioned painting or a sculpture or whatever, at the location that celebrates environmental protection, renewable energy, draws attention to the fact that, you know, we are following our 100% renewable commitment in applying these funds that the public voted for, for renewable energy, to these locations, and educating the public that this program exists. A lot of people out there don't even know that we're making these efforts.
Commissioner Davenport and Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, excuse me, I support the substitute motion for the CDO. I think it's a great idea, and we do have a lot of local artists who would love to, you know, participate and benefit from this. Just got one question about, I swear I need a new computer. Okay, SP number eight, it was a jail-led LED? Yeah, LED lighting in project for jail. Just your train of thought for SP number eight, why was that not considered?
Um, you know, I looked at locations that had, that seemed to have foot traffic, that were very public locations. It seems to me that that project seems to be internal to the jail.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion? Okay, so the residents, they may want to participate in drawing something, and, you know, sometimes the residents within the jail may have, like, visitors, and I just think a dry wall in the jail is just a terrible waste of a wall, but just my train of thought.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I had initially had conversation with staff about, you know, specifying how these funds were to be divvied in a certain amount to, a higher amount to the public safety, so it could be divvied up among the three police station locations. They suggested it would be easier if, or more efficient if these decisions were made with, you know, with the Cultural Affairs Commission in consultation with staff. And the idea, I want to speak to the idea of, you know, artists being lesser in this $92,000.
Commissioner, just, I mean, I think you've answered the question, I'm going to move to Commissioner Thornton.
Okay.
Commissioner Thornton?
I actually appreciated Commissioner Myers' comments, and I was almost persuaded to change my initial vote, because it's not concrete to me. I think we vote on things, and we, our vision is not always the vision, but when Commissioner Myers talked about education and folk, regular people, you know, using the solar and it's educational, that makes sense to me. Your CDO is almost like a visionary thing. We need to start doing things with an end in mind, not just to make people feel, oh, well, I did that, or when people, I would like to see if this comes back, or it might pass tonight, but if it does come back, I would love to see more of an educational slant on it in the future. But I appreciate Commissioner Myers bringing us back to the vision, the original proposal.
All right, I think we have on the table, Commissioner Link, one more time.
Yes, you know, I'll note the CDO ends with selected artworks should convey a theme relating to environmental protection and/or renewable energy. That's intended to be an educational direction, you know, I might not have made it very clear there. But also, I want to speak to the $92,000 being divided up. You know, over and over and over again, we see public art projects that are of a very large scale, that demand a large amount of professional skill in their installation, and we just don't have a whole lot of local, locally-based public artists who can pull that kind of thing off. In coming up with a number of smaller projects, we are more likely to have more local artists who can qualify, who have the skills to do smaller projects, whether it's a mural or a smaller-scale sculpture, or, you know, kind of an environmental piece. You know, the intention is for the Cultural Affairs Commission to kind of determine how those funds are divided, and hopefully, there will be smaller projects that are more accessible to our local artists.
Thanks, Commissioner. We have a substitute motion on the floor. We'll begin a roll call vote with Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Nope.
Fisher?
No.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
Davenport.
And Davenport?
Yes.
Five yes, five no.
This is interesting. Tell you, sometimes in these conversations, I would wonder if Public Information Staff would offer a soundtrack, and I was thinking of the great Ray Davies of the Kinks, who wrote a song called "Art Lover." And I am an art lover, but I will express that I'm also a lover of the core pursuits of our SPOSS program generally, and while I think there are lots of great opportunities for art, when I know the limited number of dollars that can go into the core systems and upgrades, I would want to see as many dollars directed there as possible in this particular program. So I'm going to vote no, and we'll move on to the original core motion with Commissioner Hamby's.
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Ten yes.
All right, ten yes, motion carries. I can count that well. We're going to move on to item 22. This is the Lexington Road Pump Station in Forest Main, entertaining motion from the body.
Motion to approve.
Second. What are we on?
Item 22, we've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, and second from Commissioner Thornton. All right, Commissioner Davenport, any remarks?
Yeah, so this was one of the rezone that we undertook last year, and it was a six to four vote, and finally, we're going to see some houses on this, but I just, this is a perfect example of why I have a sour taste in my mouth for rezone, not that this project is bad, we need a house, but last year, we voted on a planned project for lesser homes, and we worked with East Hampton, the neighborhood next door, where they were like, they were still in opposition, but they came around to understanding that some houses was going to be built. This new project is going to have much higher density, much more compact homes, and is going to require a pump station. I support it, because I've been working on this piece of parcel for five years, but just to let people know that sometimes when you rezone and the project doesn't go through, this is what can happen.
Commissioner Thornton, any follow-up?
I'm following, I'm following up, I'm agreeing to this. I think that, well, I'm always talking about infrastructure and how important and where it's limited at. I do think this, this is, I hope this is a step in the right direction, because, you know, where we don't have those lines, we've got to have another way so communities can grow, so I do support this.
Commissioner, Davenport, follow-up?
And I do want to thank the developer, they are including, I think, about 40 homes for, as affordable, so that is a plus.
Any further remarks? On favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 23 is the Neighborhood Leaders Request for Increase of Funding to Provide Cost of Living Raises. Entertaining motion from the body?
Mayor, I'm going to make a, I'd like to make a motion that we deny this increase in funding.
All right.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Fisher to deny, got a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Fisher, any remarks?
Yes, as you all know, I've been a bit supportive of our Neighborhood Leaders Program. They do great work. The issue I'm having is that we as a commission not getting to funding pay raises for our nonprofits, that's not what we do. You know, we give them a budget, those increases should come out of those budget that we give them, and I don't think we need to get into this, we'll be sending some type of president and we start doing this. I hate that it did not get in there on the front end, but for us to go back to amend the budget to do this is just not good business practice in my mind. So, again, great supporter of the Neighborhood Leaders Program, can always be an advocate for them, but I think in this case, an increase for pay raises is not something that we as commissioners should be doing.
Commissioner Wright, any follow-up?
I think Commissioner Fisher summed up what I was thinking as well.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve with an amendment that the mayor and commission need to discuss the Neighborhood Leaders Program before the end of 2024, its continued funding from the general budget, and any revisions to its scope of services, objectives, and outcomes.
Second. I've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Hul. Commissioner Myers, did you want to speak more substantively?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I understand the, actually, the points that Commissioner Fisher's making, but we now have four years of this. This was, I guess, voted on just as I was becoming commissioner, or just before the Neighborhood Leaders Program. I can't remember quite, and we have been, we have been in some ways treating them as if they are county employees and giving the same, similar raises, and that's what's being asked for now, and I'm not sure if every year we've done that or not, but we have done that. And there has not been, I think originally, the program was set up to be a seed money with, which would be supplemented with other money from the, from the nonprofit itself. And I think that we need to have a public, open, transparent conversation about the Neighborhood Leader Program to make sure we're all on the same, we're all in the same place with it there. You know, every year we, every year we add employees and staff to our, to our budget, but it's often just six or seven people, and this is 16 people. So I think we need to publicly either embrace that, revise scope as needed, but in the meantime, I do not think that we need to be, and let me just say this, if we decide it's all fine and good and we want to continue with it, that's good, but we will have a public discussion on that. In the meantime, I don't want to penalize the people who are neighborhood leaders, who need to be paying their bills and so forth, and it's a rather small amount overall compared to our whole budget. So, anyway, those are my remarks on that.
Commissioner Hul, follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I feel aligned with Commissioner Myers and her remarks. I'm assuming and hoping you can email us all the language that you read aloud there, but I, I guess I just want to take a moment for us all to reflect on, this program to date has been funded fully by the mayor and commission, and I don't think that, at least as I've had it related to me, if I look back at the meetings that were happening around the prosperity package before I was even on this commission, it didn't seem to me like the intention behind this program was for it to remain 100% funded by general fund dollars forever. So that is completely understood, and I think it's a conversation we need to have. But at this point, having not had that conversation yet, and deciding in our budget to fund the program, I think we'd be remiss to not do the 4% cost of living adjustment for the staff of this program, the same way we have not only for our own staff, but for the other agencies that we also funded in the budget. So the library, the Public Defender's Office, the Council on Aging, there's other agencies that came before us, also seeking to augment their budget slightly to deal with cost of living adjustments, and so I see this as akin to that. My understanding is the only reason we really didn't do that as part of the initial budget. I recall this, because I was working on it with Commissioners Fisher and Hamby and everybody, but especially the two of you all near the end there. You know, it was just that what we got from the Neighborhood Leaders was, A, much larger in scope than this is, and B, we got it quite late, right? So it was just hard to shimmy something in, especially the size they were talking about that late. But this is only, you know, $38,000 added to a budget of 1.1 million, so it's just a tiny fraction of the overall budget. And while we figure out what we want to do with this program, which I think we need to do, I think we would be remiss to not apply the cost of living to the people who are doing the good work. You know, we all, we had a work session with them where we didn't get into revising the scope or revising the objectives, we didn't get into setting up a plan for how to maybe tier down the funding, to move from 100% to 75 or 50 or 25 over time or something, right? I think that would be a good conversation to have, ideally as soon as possible, so it can be well in advance of, you know, the next fiscal year budget negotiations, and in advance of the contract renewal with Family Connection. But at this point, these people are doing the work, and they didn't get the raise that everyone else we thought deserved it, should, and so I'd hate for us to not allow them the opportunity to make the same as they were last year, basically, effectively, because it's a cost of living adjustment, while we figure it out. So I just hope that we could do this now, and then meaningfully follow through on what Commissioner Myers described, to amend the program and what we're expecting from it before we're here next year, or you all are here next year.
Any other input before I return to Commissioners Fisher and Myers? Commissioner Thornton?
I think that the Neighborhood Leaders is one of the star stellar things that came out of the prosperity package, and Commissioner Myers had it half-right. They were supposed to be in place for a year. It was not their job, per se, to find money to make them sustainable. We, again, us, the government, were supposed to hire two grant writers to help sustain the Neighborhood Leaders. And I read Mr. Jones's summary of how everything rolled out, and that is not their fault at all. It is, it's almost like the conversation we had with Mr. Kettle, it's almost like we kind of dropped the ball, but I do agree with Commissioner Fisher. We have to do better and not make these knee-jerk decisions. They have, they had a budget, they could have put in their raise then, it should not have been a separate thing. There's funding, it also comes, I guess, from the school district, it also comes from the state. It seems that everybody thinks that the local government has, like, these deep pockets, and I think that, I know for a fact, my neighborhood leader and a couple of others are awesome. Maybe when we have this discussion that Commissioner Myers is talking about, maybe a new, a new structure, you know? When we organized the Neighborhood Leaders, it was right around COVID, we made it with the elementary schools in mind, maybe we need to look at it differently, what that structure looks like. We have 10 districts and 16 or 17 Neighborhood Leaders. But the thing of it is, all of our districts touch each other, so maybe that's what we need to look at. Those are some great folk, I think that we dropped the ball, but when we open this can of worms, we are not going to be able to put it back, and I don't think that's what we want to do at this late date, well, I wouldn't want to do.
That's where I return, Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and again, I think, I always try to look at everything objective and, you know, and how we came to this, where we are now. After I read the history, which I did not know at that time, and I appreciate Sister Man, I mean, Manja Jones giving us that history, it's supposed to have just been a one-time deal. Now we're four or five years in, and we're continuing to fund the program, and again, we, I'm saying the government, we dropped the ball, we did not, that those grant writers do what they need to do to help sustain them. So now we're here, and again, and I'm just going to correct, push back a little bit on Commissioner Myers, they're not our employees, they don't work.
Oh, no, I said they were like, they were like our.
Well, they're not, well, I'm going to say, they're not like us, they're not our employees. They are nonprofit that we fund, that we've given them money for budgets, and again, through outstanding, I'm not knocking the program, I'm not knocking our process, how we do our process, how we do our processes, and what we've done. And this is not a good precedent for us to go back and say, oh, this is only $38,000, and that's not a lot of money. But we start this trend. What to say when we got Council on Aging, we got Project Safe, these other nonprofit that are part of our budget, come back and do the same thing. So I just don't want to sit at that precedent moving forward. When we submit the budget, part of what should be submitted to us is, if there's going to be a cost of living in that budget, it should be a part of that budget when we get it, so.
Just kind of before I move on to others, I know, Manja Jones, there's been some mention of grant writers as a function, certainly my recollection, and just even based on the job description from early on, that the grant writers have sort of a broad swath of responsibility rather than, or responsibility specifically around supplementing the Neighborhood Leaders Program. What would that be fair to say?
Yes, sir. And they've done great work. So, you know, they, now, to be fair, we were late hiring them. But they have worked with our ACCPD, they've worked with the city of Winnable, they've worked with the District Attorney's Office, the Inclusion Office, Leisure Services, all in effort to help them write grants. But to be fair, we did hire them late.
We've got Commissioner Hamby, Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Hul.
Sure. And, and, and not to be argumentative, but, but that wasn't fair to say, because I was there when the grant writers were made part of the motion. And I remember the discussion distinctly, because at that point in time, we took money out of the fund balance, $4 million. And if you remember, the sky was going to fall, that we took those $4 million out of the fund balance. We, since then, we've taken more than $4 million out of the fund balance each and every year, and the sky still hasn't fallen. But I do remember distinctly saying that they, they go hand in hand. The grant writers are here to help, not only help continue the funding for the Neighborhood Leaders Program, but also continue helping other nonprofit programs find dollars to, to help at the time with us with, with poverty. So, and we knew that that was, that fund balance at the time was a one-time, one-time thing. So that's why it was so important to have the grant writers on the ground doing, doing the work to help those programs continue. So just wanted to make that point clear.
Got Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Hul.
Yeah, mine's just a quick request of the other, of Commissioner Fisher, that if by the amendment I put forth does not pass, if you would consider, if he would consider, I'm supposed to be talking to the mayor, right? If he would consider adding on the same amendment that the mayor and commission need to discuss the Neighborhood Leader Program before the end of 224, to discuss its continued funding from the general budget, which could include discussion of the grants as well, and any revisions to its scope of services, objectives, and outcomes. So I'm just making that request to the, assuming if, if my motion fails, that he consider doing that.
I will consider that.
Commissioner Hul.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Commissioner Fisher being willing to build that in either way. I mean, it seems to me like regardless of what we do tonight, that conversation has to happen, and it has to happen well in advance of our budget discussions. You know, for a variety of reasons, many of them talked about today, some of them not maybe, we don't have grant writers right now finding grants to fund this program. And for a variety of reasons, since the prosperity package initiated this program, we've funded it in its entirety, year after year. The commission has funded it. I think it's wise for us to find a different way forward that doesn't rely upon that. I think that's absolutely what we need to figure out. But we haven't yet. And so right now, we're looking at what's before us tonight, especially if we all seem to agree that we're going to have that discussion. What's before us tonight is just what to do about the people currently doing this work who didn't get a raise this year. And the cost of living adjustment we gave to all of our staff and other agencies we fund is 4%. And that's where I'd, I'd just like to talk about the precedent thing. We did receive a budget request from Family Connection Communities and Schools, the same time we got all the other ones. And we did not incorporate their requests into the budget we put forward because it was too much for us to do everything else we were trying to do. It was much larger than this. I believe it was like over a million dollars more. So the portion of that, that they're now coming forward to us, having understood how that budget process went, is just this cost of living portion. I suspect if we had received just this when we were going through the budget, we would have found a way to fund it, because this is an amount we could have worked out at that time. And I, you know, I can't fault them for asking for more than we gave them. But we didn't say, okay, well, we'll give you the cost of living, but nothing else. But we did do that for all the other agencies that we fund. So I don't think this is like a new precedent thing. I think this is just us kind of cleaning up the job that we did with the budget because we knew we had to punt on this program. But I don't think it's opening the door for all these other agencies. The other agencies that we do fund, like Project Safe, and Council on Aging, and Public Defenders, and the library, they're not employees of the county. They're not 100% funded by us. But they receive a lot of their funding from us. And the main point, main part of their argument for their budget increase, their requested budget increase from us, was to pay their staff more the same way we're paying our staff more. So like basically the portions of their staff that we pay for. Well, in this case, at this point, because we haven't figured out a different way yet, we have funded 100% of the staff of this program. And so the percent of this program that we're responsible for funding is all of it. And we should, I think, discuss how to move forward to change that. But since that's where we're at now, I think we would just be remiss to not give a cost of living adjustment, which is just a small fraction of that original budget ask that we did receive, a cost of living adjustment at this time seems to make sense to me, so.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I wanted to add, because the grant writers came up, that that was also in, you said the sky falling, but I think the pandemic kind of was close to stalling out the grant writer momentum that we, at that time. And when that's also when the Neighborhood Leaders were doing work that a lot of us were, were more scared to do at the time. And so what they were doing during the pandemic. But that being said, the grant writers have also been helping us with contracts. Because of that, that mind of a grant writer, it's also the contract reviewer, contract, just checking, all that kind of stuff. So they've been very busy, the contract, the grant writers and contract help and all that sort of thing. So this can be discussed. I, I'm not interested in adding a discussion about how to handle this. I think we have bigger ways of needing to discuss how we're handling different things with our budget. This seems appropriate, that the school district would be able to help us out with the budget, with the Neighborhood Leaders. But we have other things that we need to talk about. So I, I'm happy with the original motion. And certainly, we do have other things that we need to talk about, but I don't want to put it into a motion.
Commissioner Hul, last time at bat?
Sure thing. I, I hear Commissioner Wright that we have a lot to talk about. No, I'm sorry. I'm hearing Commissioner Wright that we have a lot to talk about. And I will just, I just like to point out, we had a work session with most of the Neighborhood Leaders and their executive staff in the room. We talked about this program, and nobody had anything but good things to say from behind the rail, and nobody had any specific suggestions for changes in scope, or changes in funding, or changes in, like, it just didn't, we didn't get into that discussion in that work session. There were a couple of things kind of raised up as like, I have this or that concern a little bit. But it didn't go anywhere. It didn't resolve in any way. So I do think we need to have some kind of a discussion, because this is a program that started with funding from us and has been continuing with funding from us. And last time we met to talk about it, everybody here had pretty much nothing but good things to say. And so I think the responsible way forward is to have a thoughtful discussion about what about this do we want to change? Is it how the program functions? Is it the scale of the program? Is it just how the program is funded? You know, there's a lot there. And if we don't take the time to parse through that, then we're just going to be stuck, well, y'all will be stuck in the same position next year around the budget time, just being asked to fund the whole thing again and deciding either yes or no on the whole thing. So I hope we do have that discussion.
Commissioner Thornton?
I thought, I, what, he was first.
Go ahead, Commissioner Devon.
No, I'm, I'm, I enjoy the work that our Neighborhood Leaders do. But I, three years ago, I came to the mayor commission and said, we, let's look at restructuring. I have it in my notes. Like, let's look at maybe, instead of having 16 Neighborhood Leaders, maybe have eight, or let's look at additional funding. But every year of our budget, we come to this impasse, every year. And it's like, we have, we seem to be split on what to do with the Neighborhood Leaders. So I'm, I would like, first of all, to suggest during our retreat, just, just to hash out moving forward, may, maybe getting a staff recommendation, a recommendation from the Neighborhood Leaders themselves on how to move forward on this. But I, I do remember me and the commissioner talking it at our, the last, last time we had a work session, we had discussed, like, we need to do something. We need, you know, we need to figure out how to alleviate the burden of our budget, not necessarily the burden, that's the wrong word, how, how to move forward with the Neighborhood Leaders. And one of the suggestions that was made publicly was for us to meet with the director and the, the program director of Family Connection. And two commissioners met. One commissioner, she sent out an email to everybody, what we discussed, some potential outcomes. The meeting was open to the public, the meeting was open to all of us. But only, if I do recall, only two commissioners were in that room. And that was last, yeah, that was actually February of this year, we had that meeting. But I enjoy the work that they do. And it just, our, our intent was to partner with someone with funding, or to get grant writers to help us assist with the funding, but.
Got Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Link?
I guess I don't want to belabor this at all. And I think that at this point, I'm going to hold my comments again, because I don't even know when, well, no, I will make my comment. I don't even know when, well, it's the mayor's, it's the mayor's prerogative. Because I do not remember us even discussing the Neighborhood Leaders going into the general fund. I thought they were going to be coming to us like some of the other nonprofits, you know, making their pitch and stuff. That's what I thought. So that was a blind side on my part. I would have, knowing the history, and, and where were we, I think we started out with 80,000. That was the, how many?
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand. Now we're a, a little bit over 100,000. We pay everything, and it goes back to what Commissioner Hul says. We're paying the full, the full ride on this one. We're not doing that with all of our other nonprofits. Our other nonprofits are, some of them are bringing in money from other sources. So again, it's not their fault. They do great work. But it is another indication that we as, as a commission have to do a better job in communicating, being clear about what we're saying. But I'm very clear that this was just supposed to be a one-year ride. And, and when, and when we didn't hire the grant writers, maybe we should have shut it down then.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, the question before us tonight is, is whether or not to cover a cost of living raise for, for these folks. And, you know, there seems to be a consensus that they do good and necessary work, and I, I believe that. And I believe people should be fairly compensated for their good work, especially in, in times like today where, you know, we do have inflation, and there's certainly a cost of living burden placed upon folks. And it's not like these folks are getting paid a lot with or without this 4% cost of living raise. I have no problem voting to approve this meager, what is it, $34,000 to give 10 people a?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars to give 10 people, a meager raise to help them make it through.
Sixteen.
Is it, is it 19? Well, that, that's a small amount of money for a, a good number of people to have a small raise to get through these times. You know, there's a broader conversation to be had about the program and how it's funded in the future. But the question facing us right now is, is getting them a raise to make it through the next year. And it's not a whole lot of, of money in the big scale of things. And they are doing good work. And, and yes, let's have that broader conversation.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to go in just close to staying out. I think we need to go ahead and do a vote. But again, I don't want to miss the point, and I think to Commissioner Link's comments, it is about the $38,000. And again, Monique, my thing is a sitting precedent that I stated before. There's nothing against the program, for what we're trying to do here. We, we need to figure out, you know, is this something that we're going to do in the future when things like, if it gets missed in the budget, we're going to go back and award other nonprofit. And I just don't want to sit at that precedence, you know, for me personally, so.
All right. We've got the substitute motion on the floor, and we have an ordinance to read before we do that.
Ordinance to amend the FY 2025 annual operating capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide additional funding for the Community Partnership Program, CPP, and for other purposes.
All right. We'll begin with Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, with the amendment, amended language that I shared, which I will send if this is approved, yes.
Thornton?
Yes, why?
To my substitute motion to approve.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Hul?
Yes.
Culpepper?
No.
We've got four yes, six no.
All right. We return to the original motion from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher, do you wish to amend with work session language?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Begin with Commissioner Fisher.
Fisher?
No.
Wait, so this is us wanting to deny, and also to, without anything about discussing this at all again?
I think that would, I think that would be a different, you correct me, Mayor, that would be a different conversation. I don't think that should be part of my motion to discuss. I mean, if you want to talk about it, it works at the retreat. But I don't know whether or not this should be part of my motion to deny.
So the language on the floor is just denial of the $38,000?
Yes.
All right. Hul?
No.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Six yes, four no.
All right. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item number 24. This is the Eastside Library final site selection. I'd entertain a motion from the body.
Motion to approve site selection. Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Myers, and second from Commissioner Taylor. This is actually at the junction of your district. Commissioner Myers, any remarks?
Yes, I'm, as a chair of the Site Selection Committee as well, I want to thank all the members of the Site Selection Committee and the user group who've spent a lot of time, and the public, and the staff, reviewing all the different sites. Many of us, you know, might have had a different desire to begin with, but the other sites ended up not being logistically or financially really appropriate for the use, for use. And so this site, though, I think will end up being a wonderful place. It's right there by Carriage Lane. As you're going outside of, out of town, you pass the, you pass the gas station, it'll be up there on the right. It abuts to the Clark Gardens, and then the, also the entrance to the Greenway. And we also have an upcoming project that'll be coming before us for about 600 units. I maybe, might even be more than that across from there. And as I saw when I was, I'm not going to endorse for my reelection, there's a lot of families that live along that corridor, a lot of students, but there's a lot of families as well. And so I'm really looking forward to this, and I'm happy that we can move forward with it. I believe I did want to mention, just because people might be going, when is this going to be built? And you guys have this up. I think that it was going to be finished by the end of 2026. I just put that in my newsletter. I don't think I went to, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought it was at the end of the, at the end of the agenda report, and it's included.
That's correct.
Yeah. See, I got those, those dates right on that. The Kroger comes first, though. Okay, that's next summer. And then the following year, we get the, the library over there as well. So anyway, I'm really happy about this, and I'll look forward to getting, moving on to that site selection for the Eastside Youth Center. Anyway.
Commissioner Taylor, any follow up?
Yeah, I'm just glad that it's not so far out that our students can't get to it. I know that that was a major worry for a lot of our constituents, 3, 8, and 1. And so to see it. And so to see it being close by Carriage Court is also good. I'm excited. Congratulations, Eastside, we got a library.
Any further remarks? Commissioner Thornton?
Yeah, I've been sitting on needles and pins, and for that same reason, on where is it going to be? I think it's an awesome location. The YWCO is nearby, talking about the trail coming in there, some possible housing. I really think this site had the neighborhood in mind, the community in mind. So congratulations.
Just one other point there, and that's only that, I think that this also gives an opportunity, you know, Barnett Shoals is pretty, it's pretty fast, right? Pretty fast road. But with the development that's going across the way, that's going to have some businesses up in the front with the library, with, you know, I think that this will make this more of a neighborhood area to stop in and frequent, rather than something to pass by really fast. So I'm excited for that development as well on the Eastside.
Commissioner Link?
I'm excited. This is a great spot, and it abuts a really beautiful area, and the Greenway Trail growing through there. I'm speaking of Barnett Shoals and the fast traffic. Does this plan include us going ahead and building some kind of multi-use path along this property? What are, I mean, I know this is really conceptual at this point, but I presume that's...
Commissioner, this is right where the newest Greenway segment does meet its terminus with Carriage.
Yeah, but, I mean, I'm talking about along the road frontage.
Can somebody answer that?
I don't believe I've seen a concept that includes that.
Yeah, I mean, they're, it's pretty scary biking on something that fast.
The plan for across Barnett Shoals does include multi-use through that side.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I was going to speak to how this section of Barnett Shoals is our complete street. Sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes on both sides. We have the pedestrian median right there at Carriage, at that area. So this is our complete street that fits that ordinance. And then it's even more enhanced with the Greenway that's allowing the connectivity without even being on the roadway for those that are pedaling or walking or running. But anyway, it's our complete street from Lexington to the 90-degree turn. But anyway, so it is complete. Commissioner Link?
Commissioner Davenport?
Real quick, what is the process for slowing down the traffic for Barnett Shoals? Do we, doing work requests? Not work requests? Can you answer that, Dr. Myers?
No, I'm saying you get out there with a stop.
Okay.
I don't know, Manager Jones, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Frody and slip. We can certainly take a look at it. What we would do is consider the fact that it's, I believe it's a minor thoroughfare. So slowing down traffic on a minor thoroughfare might not be conducive. However, we'll take a look at it for sure, and I'll send out an email to them.
Minor, that Barnett Shoals road?
It might not be, but let me check.
Just generally, Commissioner Davenport, one of the challenges with just kind of modifying speeds, you know, even in those places where we'd very much like to see speeds slowed, is we have to interact with the Georgia Department of Transportation to get what are called warrants for running radar on those streets. And so they won't let local governments just, as a desire, modify the speed. They have to look at what the natural traffic flow is. And so most often, the way that the road is built is going to dictate how people feel comfortable driving. And so we've had some other roadways in which we would have liked to have lowered the speed. But unfortunately, GDOT then says, well, you can't radar on that road now that you've lowered the speed, and people are just going to drive how they naturally feel comfortable driving. So again, wider lanes, wider roads. People feel like 45 is good?
I'm just saying that, there's some history on that road.
Certainly.
And just incorporating kids leaving school, and you've got these neighborhoods that are going to be built across the street, and like hundreds of homes in the redevelopment in that area, I'm just, I'd like to get ahead of that game instead of having all this infrastructure built and then, you know, trying to deal with it later. But Lord forgive me, I speed down that road.
And certainly some of what I think we would hope to see is a signalized intersection for better ingress and egress. Commissioner Taylor?
I was going to ask that, because right in front of Carriage Court, like Commissioner Wright said, there is the button that you can push for cars to slow down and stop. Is it above our pay grade to get those up and down Barnett Shoals? Would that be a state thing, a GDOT thing?
We, this is not a GDOT right-of-way, even though they do control our permit to radar. So what we would want to do is just ask Transportation Public Works to identify some other potential crossing opportunities, particularly if the proposed development moves forward and we do have a new signalized intersection for vehicle stopping as well. We may want to ask, is there some other natural place for pedestrian crossing? So I imagine that staff is hearing this.
That's right. We'll get an answer.
And send it out.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, following up on that, Commissioners Taylor and Davenport, you know, in our, it might be the very next item we're looking at, Lexan Corridor, there are these, you know, wonderful pedestrian hybrid beacons that we're putting into other places, like the one that Commissioner Wright was talking about. Perhaps us, you know, we Eastside Commissioners might think of that as we're moving forward into our T-Splus 2026, and putting in some traffic calming along there. Because I am concerned about, there's a lot of people who have to cross over to the other side of the road to get a bus going in another direction. And let's be real, they're not all going to walk up to that one place at Carriage Lane. It's quite a hike from several parts in between. So perhaps we can all work on that.
Commissioner Taylor?
I know that this is not, because I'm asking about, now, I'm asking about Peter Street. And I know this is not the topic, totally off-subject, but on-subject. Because we have a lot of speeding on Peter Street as well, that we did traffic coming on. But we only put a stop sign there for a four-way stop, and they're still speeding like midway through the dip, then you come up from under the bridge. So a dog has been killed, and they keep taking out the utility poles.
So that'd be a perfect item for your round robin at the end of the meeting, and then staff can pursue that as a...
I thought I'd take my shot. Okay, sorry.
But tonight is the night for all those kinds of things, the conclusion. All right, anything else pertinent to the library property? All right, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Item 25, you've gotten some new language regarding the previously signaled resolution that we're going to have for periodic recapture of unspent ARPA funds, so that we don't have to return money to the federal government. Obviously, this language is newly in front of you. Certainly, if the Commissioner would like to make a motion to hold, that is an option tonight.
I'll make the motion to hold.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton to hold, second from Commissioner Hul. Any questions you want to ask?
No, I do want to read it, because I've already gotten calls from constituents that didn't see it on the...
Agenda.
Agenda.
On the post-it page.
So now I have, and I can read.
Commissioner Hul, any follow-up questions? Do you just want to make sure that you get from, answers from staff around?
Yeah, I want to understand the feasibility of things we funded, meeting the timelines that are laid out in Exhibit A. So I see that projects that were contracted in 2023 have to have expended a quarter of their funding by January 1st of 2025, and then new contracts by July 1st of 2025. I just want to make sure that that's enough time to reasonably expect these projects that we're awarding funding to, to actually have gotten that funding out the door, given that they probably can't do much of anything until the contract's finalized. So this sounds like it's a little further out. They have a different timeline for the 2024 ones, probably based on our last discussion. But I'd just like to understand that more clearly.
And I don't know if you want response right now, or if you want to get some email when the other questions may have been asked.
I welcome either.
Okay.
We'll send an email.
Okay. Commissioner Wright?
I wanted to thank Acting Manager Jones. I like the concise checkpoints. I think it's important for people to meet deadlines, to have those little milestones along the way, and so that it gives a sense of urgency before it's too far to actually help. And I think it'll allow everybody to help. I'm ready to approve this, but I do realize that it was tied only to the public. So it's not causing any major problems. Okay, good. So I look forward to seeing this maybe for the consent agenda for the October meeting.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, just got a question for Thornton and Hul. When you said hold, date certainty, or retreat, or October?
Hold for a single cycle.
I mean, if we had that time spent, but I really was hoping for '25, '26, and '27, that we would begin that discussion at the retreat. Because all of it is ARPA money. So I would like to hold it until October?
For an October vote.
Yeah. Is that okay, Patrick?
Okay.
First Tuesday of October.
Does staff have any issues with that? Like Tom?
Staff's indicating no.
Mayor?
Commissioner Fisher?
My only concern is, I thought maybe we need to do a special call meeting to vote on this. But my only concern is, if staff doesn't have a concern, is whether we decide what direction we're going to spend the rest of this money that we have contracts in place, ready to go. So I just want to make sure we don't wait too long, and we end up losing our funding. So I just want to be mindful of that.
Commissioner Myers? Well, I'm following up on that. The next item, which is on the business development and workforce support, I'm going to make a motion to hold it for two weeks, because I do feel like it needs to be voted on sooner so we can get these contracts and such. But we did just receive it, so perhaps we could do some of this together. That's all, I'm just bringing that up.
Well, I'm...
Commissioner Thornton?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm negotiable on, because I can even do a two-week, because I think that was your concern, about '27. So I could, we could do those together then, if that's okay, at a special meeting.
Yes, so sort of just thinking about the gears meshing between these three things. So certainly, a prospect is that '26, which is sort of what the clawback provisions are, the return to funds could be, it could be an October vote. '26 and '27 could be a September 17 to vote. So that, just as they tie together, that is a prospect.
Yeah. And I'm saying that because I'm trying to get Commissioner Davenport's eye contact here. Because I know that you had a concern that you want us to discuss it and go ahead on and vote. So that's the only reason, you know, I would like, whatever's, whatever you're feeling good about, too.
All right, so motion is to hold '25 until the first Tuesday of October. It's a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, as signaled just a moment ago, Commissioner Myers, if you'd like to make a motion to hold '26 until September 17, now is that time.
I want to make a motion to hold item 26, one of these numbers, yeah, until, for two weeks, until the agenda-setting meeting.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Myers, any other observations you want to make?
I do want to point out, well, I mean, we have a copy here, but I would like to know that this is going to be put into the, I don't know, like linked to the agenda that's right out there for tonight, because it was title-only. I don't know if it was put in. It's on there now? Okay, that's good. And I wanted to know if there's, I mean, I just had a moment to glance over it while we've been in here. Is there an opportunity for commissioners to see any more detailed information than this on these? I mean, there's a, basically, the recommendation that you're giving, the staff is giving, is, I was finding that, it seemed to be to allow staff to continue working with agencies to refine the scope of work, performance metrics, and contract budget, so long as these changes do not substantially change the submitted proposal. That seems kind of, I mean, we're on a certain timeline here. It seems to me like it needs to have more definitive time in there. I mean, we don't want them, I don't want to give these, I don't want to give the organization...
You're talking about the resolution right now, or are you talking about?
No, workforce. We're on that item, right on there, that workforce there. And it says on the options, allow the staff to continue working with agencies to refine scope. I'd like, it seems like it'd be helpful of that to be more concrete with a deadline, because this obviously cannot go on forever. The whole point of why we had to do it this way was because you all needed time to do the contracts. So I might follow up on that. And also, you also said contingent upon the agencies providing accepted proof of required insurance. Again, if we could get any more specific information about whether or not this is something we perceive is going to happen, or, and again, having a timeline as well. Because the timeline that Commissioner Taylor and I put in there for the 16th was, the whole point was to get this down and get it moving along and not having it drag out, and then at the end be going, well, too late, guys, we didn't get this all in. So...
Commissioner, just so I understand, what you're suggesting is that we enumerate some deliverables from the recipients?
Well, we have them, but they're kind of vague, they're vague.
And a time by which?
Yeah, more of timeline so that people know, like, we're not just approving, like, continue working on this. Like, we, the whole point was they need to work on this, and if it doesn't get done, you know, we move on, put the money back in the other pot. So we need to be able to know that. And from this, I don't know if that's the case. I don't know if all of these are like, man, this is 95% done, and we're ready to move on, or one is 95 and one is like 36. So I need some more information before I'm willing to approve this. So hopefully, we can send you some questions and get some more specific information.
And if I might speak a little bit to the staff perspective on that. So it is a very tight timeline, as directed by the CDO, and staff and the partner agencies have worked very aggressively to get the proposals where they're at. They are now published online. You'll see the staff recommendation is basically a recommend to approve with some contingencies. And those contingencies vary by proposal. So in some cases, it might be that we only need an affidavit or a risk assessment, kind of some last-minute paperwork to close out. In others, we might be looking for stronger performance metrics so that this is actionable. What I'm hearing from you is if you decide to hold tonight, staff will probably continue to work with those agencies and address any of those deficiencies during that period. In relation to the insurance, insurance is required as a part of our contracts. It's a chicken and egg. We do not recommend any of our partners procure unique insurance on behalf of Athens-Clark County contract requirements until a vote has been made to award, because you don't want to go put that outlay there. Some of them have already demonstrated that they have insurance that can meet our needs, and it's just some paperwork.
Okay, that helps. I'll follow up in writing as I look at this in more detail.
Got Commissioner Hul and Commissioner Thornton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to suggest, I heard Commissioner Thornton recommending we discuss this at the retreat. Obviously, that'll be after the motion to hold date. So if there is, well, whatever's on the work session agenda next week, we're all going to be in the room next week. And so maybe we can treat these items like we have the ones that staff gives us a slideshow of but doesn't present on. We can just have questions. And so whether you, Mr. Mayor, would want to put it at the beginning or the end of the work session, it seems prudent to me to maybe give us an opportunity to follow up on these questions with staff and have a dialogue altogether in the work session before we're expected to vote the following week. And then hopefully, we arrive the following week having a clear idea of where we're all at and what we want to do.
Maybe a graceful solution is, you know, I'll meet with Manager Jones, and maybe there could be a memo that outlines kind of what these components are that Andrew just spoke to, questions that may not be resolved, so that we just know, hey, these questions are not yet resolved. And then if there's some questions at the work session, we could talk about those. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks for that. Commissioner Thornton?
I think I jumped the gun a little bit. For number 27, I said I would be interested in number 27, number 27 to go with number 26. But I really wanted us to discuss 27 at the retreat, which is two days later. So scratch the 17, because I don't think we're going to know any more by the 17.
In a few short minutes, you could make a motion to hold till the October voting meeting.
But I'm taking it back. I don't want to...
No, that's okay. Just because the words are out there floating in the air, I'm not going to hold them to you for all of time.
Okay. Okay.
All right, there is a motion to hold item 26 until September 17th, recognizing that we've got an opportunity for discussion at the work session, should that be necessary. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item 27 includes a proposed funding scheme based on Commissioners' priority interests and the previously identified necessities with use of these federal funds, particularly around ensuring that any programs be extensions of existing ones, and any capital expenditures being things that can be inked by staff by the end of the year. You're an interest in holding until the first Tuesday of October meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
I have a...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a substitute motion.
Is there a motion to hold until the October voting meeting?
Yes, thank you.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton.
And we don't have to discuss.
And second from Commissioner Davenport.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one thing?
Absolutely.
On the Excel spreadsheet, I did notice it earlier, $25,000 of ARPA funding for the Attorney's Office is going to be important to help continue that partnership with the, I think it's Philip Bescaronza.
Oh, that's helpful. Appreciate that. Some professional services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. All right, we need a motion for suspension of rules because we have two new business items. Is there a motion for suspension of rules?
Some moves.
Second. All right, got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Fisher. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, rules are suspended. It's Wild, Wild West here. All right, item 28 is approval of appointments to the Keep Athens-Clark County Beautiful Board. Do I hear a motion for this?
Some move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Wright, second from Commissioner Link. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And Commissioner Wright, I do not have those names in front of me. Do you have those?
I don't.
I do.
They've been voted on by the, by the board, and so the names came from, no, these are the next.
They have been. I know I've got them in email, and I apologize, I thought I had them on my laptop, and do not. We thank those residents for their willingness to serve on the board.
They meet tomorrow, so I'll be sure and let them...
Commissioner Hul has them in front of him.
Mr. Lorenzo Chico Rosier, Ms. Keela Singleton, Ms. Sarah Clark, Mr. Ladarius Thomas, and Ms. Angela Huff.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Hul, and thanks to those residents. I appreciate it. All right, similarly, we have appointments to several boards, authorities, and commissions as item 29. Is there a motion for approval of those?
Some move. Second.
All right, I got a motion from Commissioner Taylor, who's the second?
Oh, she's the motioner.
Oh, Commissioner Link was the first, Commissioner Taylor in the second spot on my little sheet. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all.
Are you going to read them?
I do have these ones. This provides for continued service on the Downtown Development Authority by Drew Dekel and Jason Leonard, service on the Athens in Motion Commission from Alan Jones and Gabrielle Sandberg, service on the Division of Family and Children's Services Board by Karina Gallagher, service on the Hearings Board from Keith Hubbard, service on the Human Relations Commission from Parissa Burton, Brandon Hughes, Morgan Lyle, Mary O'Neill, Venzella Stowers, and Dawn Bennett Alexander, service on the Planning Commission from Jennifer Fleece, service on the Public Safety Civilian Oversight Board from Kevin O'Neill and Joseph Block, and service on the Vision Committee from Cameron Harrelson, Noah Isherwood, and Julie Walker. All right, so thank you to all of them. Now is that time in the evening when we do have input from residents who would like to speak to any item that was not on our agenda this evening. And the terms of this public input are as they were earlier, a three-minute opportunity. If you'd like to speak to any item not on the agenda, please provide your name, speak clearly, you have up to three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, how y'all doing this afternoon?
Good, thank you.
My name is Pastor David Lester of the New Faith Tabernacle Church, one and eight South Peter Street, right here in the great city of Athens. My concern is, Commissioner Taylor hit on it earlier, we having a problem with speeding down Peter Street. It has, I had another neighbor here that had a concern, so I address his as well. I know I got three minutes. But the problem is, Mayor, we have, since April, we have had nothing but a lot of activities going up and down Peter. One incident, they took down the telegram pole, and we was unable to have any power in our church on Sunday morning. So I had to cry loud and spare not, if you know what I mean. So rolling off of that, the neighbor, Brother Curtis McCune, had two dogs that get hit by a speeder. One died, the other one had to put a pin in his leg, so he made it. But nevertheless, since then, we have had issue with this. So they put, at the four-way of Peter Street and East Broad Street, they put a four-way stop signs on each corner. I want, if you can imagine this, but the neighbors that live there, I don't know if they live in this community, but the student live in the housing. The trees has covered up the stop sign that they put up a few months ago. So with that making vision poorly, the cars never stop at the four-way. They just broom through. This traffic is coming off of Olympic Drive, 78, which is East Broad Street, coming up Peter. And it's a throughway. And by it being a throughway, people just use it as a shortcut to get to 29 bypass and, you know, to make it, make their transition. But our concern is putting a, some kind of, something there at the four-way, a crosswalk or something, so that the people that is driving these cars can see that people have to cross the street to come to church. We got a lot of students up and down Peter Street, traveling, walking, I mean, we only got one sidewalk. So it's very difficult to cross over if you had to the come to church or go to a neighbor house, enter these areas in that percentage, and they just don't slow down. So that's our concern. And I didn't want to bring the whole church here so they can get up, so I figure I'll just chew my cabbage.
Thank you, Pastor Lester. I appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda?
Anyone need this?
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move to any input from the body. I have one item tonight, and that's a referral to the Legislative Review Committee. And that's a review of our existing noise ordinance with any staff recommendations and particular attention to sound in the AR, agricultural residential zone, around non-agricultural activity. So that is it tonight. Any report, Manager Jones?
No, sir.
Anything, Governor Haslam? Anything, Attorney Drake?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to the commission. We'll begin with Commissioner Hamby and end with Commissioner Davenport.
No, sir. Thank you.
Oh, I believe, no, I haven't. Oh, yes, I do. Yes, I do. September, September the 14th, NACA will be hosting a work, a housing workshop in Winneville at the Magnolia Building or something. I'm going to send all the Commissioners a notice. September the 14th is also the Hispanic Day downtown. Maybe some Commissioners want to get together and do a table. And also, it's Back to Home Day with Caldo. So September the 14th is a big day, so somebody should be somewhere on September the 14th.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes, one, I would like to encourage the mayor to schedule something for us to discuss the Neighborhood Leader Program and follow up, despite the fact that it wasn't part of an agenda item. I think there's just, the extent of the discussion tonight indicates that it is something we need to be clear about and make sure, and I think that's a responsibility of the community and also to the neighborhood leaders, so they know exactly where we're at at that. The second thing is a request, actually, to the Managers' Office and such to give us an update on the TSP process for 2026 because according to the, you know, according to what we approved a couple of months ago, the project submissions will be reviewed starting December 1st. And as we know, that's only three months away, there's supposed to be public input and so forth. And I've had some people in my district asking me some details about that. And finally, I'm really looking forward to our commission retreat in Greenville. So look forward to seeing the city and having the discussion among my colleagues.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Culpepper?
No comment.
Commissioner Hul?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just reiterate my three requests from the past two months, which I also shared by email. I know there was responses from about half of y'all supporting one or more of them. So requesting that the mayor assign to the Planning Commission, or LRC, or GOC, examining the single-family regulations in our code to consider exempting homestead properties and/or increasing the number of unrelated people allowed, examining our zoning code to consider removing gas stations from being allowed by right, and examining our code with regard to halfway houses, making revisions that align with state law and allow for the process to be easier. I think all three of those are important things we can do for safe and affordable housing in this community, and so I hope we'll move forward on those. I'll also just say, we didn't have anybody at the podium tonight. Maybe they're fatigued, I don't know. But regarding the, we didn't have anybody at the podium regarding the Palestine thing. I do appreciate Pastor coming and sharing with us the concerns about Peter Street. So thanks for sticking through all of our stuff to let us know about that. But, man, protests are huge in Israel. It's not just Palestinian activists, it's lots of Israelis too now that are, you know, striking, shutting down the country essentially, wanting a ceasefire. It's increasingly a popular thing in our country, and yet we still haven't seen our federal government do what it needs to do to ensure that a ceasefire happens. And so I would ask us, again, to consider passing a resolution in support of a ceasefire in Gaza. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, off of Cathwood and Club Drive, we just, or the major development that's going to have 187 single-family homes. Now that popped up, you know, when you talk about zoning, you know, the resident didn't know it was coming. And the good thing is, we did reach out to the developer. He's going to meet with the neighbors and stuff there, but that's going to be a major traffic issue with Jefferson Road, Newton Bridge, and Cathwood with 187 single-family homes. So just want to be mindful of that development coming in and what's going to be the impact on that particular side of town. So just want to put it in there, Mayor.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Build by right, yeah.
Commissioner Wright?
I have nothing to say. What a great meeting. Here we go.
Commissioner Taylor?
Tonight was great. We did great work. No comment.
Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I want to thank the pastor for coming and talking about Peter Street. I believe that there's some analysis going on with staff. I was told that back in the spring, and I was super glad to get that four-way stop sign, but thank you for letting us know that things have grown up over it. We'll make sure staff gets to that and gets those trees trimmed. Can management tell us if, what kind of analysis is going on with Peter Street? I understand it's classified in a way differently than other streets in the neighborhood and is not allowed to have speed bumps and certain traffic calming devices, but we're exploring other options? So what's going on?
We will get back with you on that. Sounds like we also have something to get back with Commissioner Davenport on as well.
Okay, yeah. I mean, speeding's a big deal right now. We've got a whole new crew of young people who've come into our community every, every August, and I know I put in probably a half dozen work orders in the past month or so about speeding in certain neighborhoods. We've got a lot going on in Normal Town, we've got some, some stuff going on in Boulevard. And, you know, I'm hoping we can get a little more serious about enforcement of these speed limits in our community. You know, I know it's not easy for our police force to get out there and wait on corners and just hope that somebody comes by going too fast, but I'm just really afraid that sooner or later, we're going to have some lives lost, especially in some of our neighborhoods where we have children walking to school.
Commissioner Davenport, if you could give your remarks and then make a motion to adjourn.
Just for the retreat, we've been in Greenville, South Carolina, just asking the mayor and staff to understand that we are human and we don't want to sit in a room for eight hours, 10 hours a day, so be mindful of that. The Greater Athens Fair be on Dunlap Road, September 11th to 14th. I remember as a kid going to that every year, so hopefully you guys can go out to Dunlap Road, September 11th to 14th, and enjoy the Greater Athens Fair, and motion to adjourn.
Some move. I'm in second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, everybody, please have a beautiful evening.